Let's call the meeting to order and rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
We do need to add an item to the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, give me one second here. We need to add a council determination on the response to the reorganization of Endo International bankruptcy. It's related to the opioid class action suit. And we need to decide if we're going to take an action, what, before our next council meeting. The city attorney will explain the specifics and make a recommendation. That would be placed as item eight under General Business.
All right, any other changes?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. We have a presentation from the Superintendent of Lakeville Schools. I think he's online. Tom, are you gonna?
I have to ask him to unmute. There we go. Doug, you can unmute whenever you'd like.
All right, how's that? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can hear you.
And you should be able to share your screen for the presentation if you'd like.
I think Kim sent it to y'all to do, so I thought she sent the presentation to you to advance.
Yep, she had sent it as a backup in case there was an issue. I can share my screen if you would like.
Yeah, why don't you try to come in and tell you technology and iPad are probably not gonna make this work well for me. So if you can do that, that'd be great.
Okay, so you'll just need to tell me when to, we're gonna make this real high tech. You just need to like, you know, give me a nod or touch your nose when you need me to advance things.
Yeah, that's right. I'm very high tech, so we can, we can make it work. So, thank you. Are you ready for me to go?
Please, and welcome.
Okay, super. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Sorry I couldn't be there earlier. I know that Tom and I tried to make this work a couple of different times. So it's not normally something we do during the middle of the year. We kind of do at the state of the schools, kind of beginning of the year. But you kind of get part of the year recap, so that'll be good. So thank you. I do think that we all know that, as it says there, we are growing together. You can go ahead and advance it, Tom. And you can see our Board of Education. We do have several members of our board that are fairly new within the last year. Kim Baker is our current chairperson, Dave Anderson is our vice chair. So we also have an administrative team that maybe you're aware of. May know some of those folks. Couple of them live in the Elko New Market area as well. So you can see that we have a pretty good, pretty good looking group of folks there that work hard every day. Our mission is, next slide, something that I think is important to remind people of is that together with our families, that we as Lakeville Area Schools try to provide educational opportunities, as it says there, to ensure academic, social, civic, and personal readiness for every student. And as I point out, and you guys are well aware, Lakeville Area Schools is just not Lakeville proper. We're 86 square miles, and we'll touch base on that a little bit as we talk about growth. We did start something back in 2022. The Board approved our strategic plan. It's a three-year plan that's updated, and you can see the mission core values, goals, envision that's there. I won't spend a whole lot of time on this other than, than to say, I think that, as y'all know, we did go through some financial challenges last year in regards to a $7 million budget reduction. But thankfully, we've been able to rectify that situation. Being new last year, it wasn't necessarily something I was expecting us to deal with, but we are trying to be good stewards of the resources that were provided. And so that's something I think to highlight along with the fact that I think everybody does have high expectations for everything that we do, and we do stay very student focused on the needs of our students. And as you know, we are a growing district. As you go to the next slide, again, something that, growth is a blessing and a curse. And I know you guys are experiencing some of that as well, because you have to hopefully be forward thinking enough to be able to deal with that growth, otherwise you're kind of caught behind the eight ball. And of course, COVID wasn't very, wasn't something that anybody was expecting, so it did make some issues for us as a school district. But as our community continues to grow, we have to grow to meet the needs of our community as well. The next slide just touches base about the growth in Lakeville residential building permits. Something Tom and Justin and I visit about on a monthly basis or as often as we can in regards to our growth. Lakeville itself is one of the fastest growing communities in the metro area, let alone the state. You can see what's happened there. It is something, I think, to point out that as we take a look at our growth over the years, it is something, when a house is built, it doesn't always necessarily mean one student. Sometimes it means two students or more, and that's something that really has impacted us over the last several years is our growth as a district. We are up over 12,000 students, as the next couple of slides will probably touch base on. But it's just not, as I said, Lakeville proper. We are 86 square miles, and by 2030, our school district community is projected to grow to nearly, by another nearly 13,000 residents due to the housing. You can see what that means to Lakeville, also what our projections are for Elko New Market and Credit River. And so with 86 square miles as a district, that is something that we try to take into account. A lot of the growth has been in the Lakeville area itself. But as you take a look at our projected enrollments, we could be anywhere from where we are currently, a little over 12,000 students, to in the next 10, 10 years or so, we could be anywhere from 15,000 to 16,000 students, depending on the trajectory path that's there. We do anticipate normally about a 2% growth every year. How that plays out, broken down by grade levels. You can see what's happening there at elementary. We have continued to grow. We do have our new school coming online next fall, Highview Elementary, which will help with some of the capacity issues. But we continue to expect to have that growth move forward as a district with at least 900 students in the next five years. Even though we have a lot of things taking place in regards to growth as a high-quality school district, I think there's a lot of things that we still can be proud of, even though that growth does take a lot of resource and the time and energy. I think that people know that our students perform well. We do receive high grades when it comes to our residence rating for schools, and we try to do things to encompass as much of the community as we can. I will say, I think that in my short time here, one of the things that we need to do a better job at is incorporating our district as a whole. A lot of our folks from, from central office, school board, just district as a whole, sometimes gets focused on Lakeville itself, but we're a much larger community, as you know, and we have to make sure that we're doing that outreach. I know our board is working to try to work on engagement activities and wants to be aware of what's happening, not only in Lakeville proper itself, but throughout our whole district. So as those opportunities come up, if we're able to share those with our board and ourselves, we'll make sure we're taking advantage of that. What our community says through our surveys, what do our parents and residents like most about our school district? I think you can see there that our staff is always one of the highest ranking things that people like, is that our quality of teachers, how our kids are able to achieve, and the opportunities for programming, not only in the academic side of things, but from the sports and activity side, and that they feel like they are communicated well on a regular basis. As you go into the next slide, there are just some facts that people may not know. We are a fairly large employer of over 2,300 staff members. We, as I said, I've heard several times, I've said several times, 86 square miles is our boundary area. Not everybody realizes that. We have about 8,400 kids that ride our buses. We serve over 10, almost 10,000 meals a day. And we do have 18 facilities, and we are finishing up that 19th one. And the total miles of busing is there as well. Some other fast facts about our district. As a growing district, we are also growing in some of these other areas. Our English language learners is an area that we are growing quite rapidly in. I forget exactly how many languages are spoken in our district, but you'd be surprised. I know it's almost 60 languages, if I'm not mistaken, are spoken in our district. We do have a large portion of our students that receive some special ed help, and population there continues to grow. We do have gifted education. Homeless students are also served by our district. You can see there as well that we have students enrolled, not only open enrolled into our district, but students that open enroll out of our district. Some of those are down in your neck of the woods as well in Elko New Market with New Prague, and we now have a fairly large number of students that open enroll into the New Prague area as well. So there's just some demographic areas that we continue to have, oh, there it says language is 87. I knew it was more than 60, but 87 different languages. That, that's a challenge for our staff as well, to be able to deal with a lot of families that come in that may not have English as their first language. Some of the other things that we wanted to highlight is our academic side of things. You can see where our state assessments happen to fall in reading and math and science. You can see the dip that took place in COVID, but we've been fairly steady as a school district. But we have to continue to make sure that we are working to improve those scores across all grade levels of our district. We go to the next slide, our graduation rate continues to be very steady. Again, there's a little bit of dip that's related to COVID, because we have some kids that fell behind, but we're working to make sure that we're catching all of our students up in that area. So you can see our count is again fairly consistent across the board. Couple other things, school connectingness, and to the degree which our young people feel like there's an adult or a parent at school that care about them. That's something that we try to monitor, because social emotional well-being of our students is vitally important. We want to make sure they're taken care of academically and safe, but safety also includes making sure that they are connected to somebody. And so that's something we continue to work on. And of course, as we know, with the new boundary adjustments that are probably taking place here this coming year, that's something that we know that we're gonna have to continue to do the outreach on to make sure those students and families that are adjusting from schools that they've been in this year to some possibly new locations next year, we'll have to continue to strengthen that. When we take a look at school funding, this is something that I know that we, we talk about quite often, even though our business is making sure we're taking care of kids, it takes money to do that. There is a gap in what, in what we get funded. You can see there, we did receive some of the largest increases in the state's history. A lot of that came through our special ed across subsidy. But we also received some of the largest number of unfunded mandates. So with the money that we were receiving, which we're very thankful for, we do have some unfunded things, such as the REED Act, which at a minimum is probably a $2 million expense that we didn't receive dollars for. Unemployment that many businesses are having to deal with, and family leave as well. We're impacted by that. There are 19 school districts in Minnesota that requested a referendum on November 7th due to ongoing needs. And you can see, as you heard, probably heard, that one of our referendums passed and one of the other questions did not. And so that, that's a great thing for us, that we had the first one pass. That is something that helps us open up the new elementary school, but it did have an impact on, on the things that we're gonna be doing for the social emotional well-being of our students. Here's how we compare to some neighboring districts, and it's important to note there how our, our community lags behind by about $400 per pupil, which would be about an additional $5 million for us. The next slide that's on there talks about our general fund. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we did have some budget reductions that needed to take place. You can see there that our expenditures were outpacing our revenue, and that was taking place for probably four or five years before my arrival, something that they were aware was taking place, but had to be corrected. You can't continue to spend down your savings account without knowing at some point you have to pay the bill when it comes due. So we were able to address that, correct that, and now we're on the right path to continue to have that growth moving forward in our general fund for stability for our students and our families as well. We did have that question, as I mentioned, for Highview Elementary. We did try to be responsible with what we asked, and of course, when you go to the next slide, you can see what was asked for with ballot question one, that is the staffing of that building. We did hire a principal Brett, Brett Loben will be the principal. He'll be coming onboard toward the end of this month to be working with families that'll be coming in there as long as hiring his staff in these particular areas that are there as well. But one thing I highlight on that is that some people said, well, why didn't, why didn't that get run at the same time that the bond referendum for the school was taking place? You can only run an operational levy in, in the month of November, and the building, again, was decided before my arrival, was done in the spring, so you couldn't run the two at the same time. Things that we're dealing with right now, and you're probably hearing a little bit about, is our boundary adjustments. There will be two more boundary adjustments coming out tomorrow for the community to take a look at. We do feel like those are the two that have been finalized by the design team, and hopefully we'll be able to be going before the board, so community have an opportunity to provide that input. We are working on our MTSS support for our students. That is an ongoing item. Contract negotiations is our, our large item for this year, along with boundary adjustments. We have our teaching staff that we're in negotiations with right now. And it's always a challenging time when you receive a large amount of money from the state, as they talk about being some of the highest, but coming out of a $7 million reduction, we have to make sure that we're very, very mindful of, of what we do when it comes to taking care of our employees and all of our staff, because they're, they're the boots on the grounds, they're the folk that are making the impact on students on a daily basis. We are also looking forward to some long-range facility recommendations this spring. We do have the Highview Elementary opening in the fall. The REED Act, as I mentioned, is something that got passed in legislation. We'll have to begin phasing that in, and it's a big impact on our reading curriculum and amount of professional development. And then we do have a couple of other levies that are gonna be up for renewal in the next couple of years that are built into our budget. The next slide, I think finishes out, actually, there isn't a next slide. I thought there was one more that said if there was questions or comments, but I'll kind of throw it open to y'all. Having been here about a year and a half, I do think that Lakeville Area School is a very high-quality school district, something that we are very proud of, is how well our students and staff perform on a daily basis. And that's something that we want to make sure that we continue to work on, make sure we get better, because we're not perfect in what we do, but we sure strive to make sure we're taking care of the needs of our students. I think that's why so many people are looking to move into our area, just because they know how strong the school district is and how, how efficient and effective our staff is in meeting their needs. So appreciate the opportunity to present. Anything else that, that I can answer questions on for you tonight, I'll do my very best.
Appreciate the presentation. I think we, I think there are, does anyone have questions? Yep.
Yeah, no, thank you. This is Josh Berg, and proud graduate of Lakeville High School, class of 2000. My wife, 2001.
Happy for you.
I know. I see the ACT scores have gone down since I've been there, though. But just wanted to touch base on, you know, the school locations down here. You know, we, we moved down here thinking, and we live on the, the Lakeville side of town, where we would typically send our kids to Lakeville. But because of not having a location down here for elementary school, and, and we had younger kids at the time, we opened enrolled to New Prague. You know, so I would, like I said, we moved down here with the intent of sending to Lakeville, but then, you know, having, having one, you know, only a couple of miles from here only made sense to us at the time. Is there any plans or anything in the works for schools down here? And if so, how are you working with the city, and is there anything else we can be doing?
Sure, yeah, yeah, great question. I appreciate that. You know, I think that that's something that as we take a look at the growth of our, of our school district, I'm keenly aware of, I think many in, in our community are aware, that a lot of our pending growth is, is gonna be heading to the south. It's gonna be outside of Lakeville city boundaries. And so that's something our facilities group is actually looking at. I have a facilities group that's taking a look at exactly that type of question. I do visit with Tom on a fairly regular basis, and it kind of made him aware that as we get closer to making the decision, of course, our school board has to make the decision on, you know, if they want to go out for a referendum, what exactly that means. From our facility side of things, the next issue that we probably have to address is related to middle school. Whether that's adding on to our existing middle schools or building something new, I think is yet to be determined. And of course, it's gonna have to pass, the community make sure that they wanna vote for that. And so when that happens, I, I think it's also in our best interest to be, best interest to be planning for the future, because I do see a lot of growth happening to the south, exactly where that is. I don't have a particular idea, but I can tell you that in, in my mind, it makes some sense to have some school, one school or two schools. My preference, I'll just be honest and tell you, my preference would be nice to have a middle school and an elementary school down in, in that neck of the woods. I don't know that we'll get to a level that we'll have to talk about doing something to our, developing a third high school. I think we can do something either adding on to our existing or possibly a career and technical center, maybe something that we're looking at down the road. So it is on the list. It is something that we have to be mindful of. But if, if you don't learn anything from me, you find out that I'm pretty straight to the point. It's also something that we have to have a lot of voters pass. And so not only the folks in, in Lakeville proper have to understand that, I think the folks in Elko New Market definitely would appreciate it and understand it, but I have to have enough people to be able to, to vote for it. And so that's something that, that our board will have to continue to work on. But I would tell you, it's, it's a high radar item for us to, to know that we need to do something outside of our boundaries. Actually, there'll be a survey coming out to the community in the not-too-distant future that one of the questions we'll be asking them is that, as we take a look at growth in our district, do people realize that we're probably gonna have to do something with school buildings outside of Lakeville city limits, preferably to the south? And so that's something we're gonna be asking people. That'll help guide and lead that discussion for us. Maybe more than what you wanted to know, but, but I tried to, to give you as much as I could.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
There any other questions anyone has?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Stiles wasn't able to be here tonight, but she asked me to ask a couple of questions on behalf of her and the community. Doug, one question that Councilmember Stiles had was, what steps the school is taking to address increased conflict and polarization amongst various groups in the school, whether it be ethnicities, social groups, whatever it is, but there seems to be just increasing tensions within, not only within schools in general, but within the district between various groups? And then the follow-up to that question is that can often result in bullying within the district, and there seems to be, if you, if you believe social media and everything, an uptick in some of, in some of that. And Councilmember Stiles was just wondering if you could talk about or elaborate on what the school district is doing to address those tensions and the resulting bullying that goes along with it.
Sure, there's a couple of things that I would say, as I know a lot of my school leadership, in, in the most recent event that took place, actually met with some community leaders from different groups and had a conversation about that. So we have to make sure that the adults are also being in support of what we're trying to do and helping us monitor and partner with us in that process, and it seemed like they're very willing to do that. I, myself and a couple of the folks from district office had a meeting with, with another group of parents in regard to that very same issue, as far as how do we communicate? How do we make sure that people are aware of what's going on? Of course, we have our, our school resource officers that are there to help for safety, but it's also about relationship building with them, to be able to be visiting with students and just out and about. And relationships as a staff as a whole, a lot of things can be kind of headed off at the pass, so to speak. When students share with our staff, here's what's going on, here's some concerns that I have, here's items that I'd like to, to make you aware of. And so just being proactive in that aspect. Our equity department, headed by Lydia Lidsow, is, works with our community as well to be able to reach our students and have conversations with them, reach families. She also has a group of folks who are active in our schools to be able to, to monitor situations and go through that process. The biggest thing for us is it's not only an issue that impacts us in school. A lot of things take place outside of school, whether it's through social media or in the community, and kind of trickle into the school. Not that we don't have our own issues that take place in the school, but to let students know that, that diversity is not a bad thing. And it's a societal issue. Sometimes it seems like that if you and I don't agree on something, that all of a sudden means that you shouldn't like me, where that's not the case at all. We have to work with our students to realize that it's okay to disagree on stuff. It's just how you handle that disagreement, and how do we make sure that you value the opinions that are there? It doesn't make person a good person or a bad person just because they don't agree with you. So that starts at a young age with, with our counselors and some of the equity work that our, our school district does to help students understand that, but is still built upon the partnership and communication with families to be able to deal with that. And then when we have situations happen, we have to be consistent in our consequences, but also try to work it as a learning experience as well, because we're still dealing with, with students and young kids that are not always as mature as they need to be. So we have to also work through that process to be able to say, not only do you maybe get a consequence for your behavior, but how do we then build upon that so you learn from that experience and figure out how to resolve that problem? We also do have some anonymous reporting related to the bullying side of things, so people don't feel comfortable coming to an adult and saying, hey, here's what's going on. There are several ways that students can report or families can report. And then we have a team that investigates that and works through that process as well. So there, there's multiple things that we're trying to do. And if I had, had a magic wand, that'd be one of the things that, that we try to be able to take care of, is social media, cell phones, issues in our schools, keep things going. It's a lot more of a challenge, and it used to be when most of us probably went to school in regard to that. So we just have to continue to monitor and work with our families and our students to address it.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Anyone else have anything? Superintendent, I really appreciate you taking the time tonight, and yeah, I wish you all the best.
Absolutely, appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You too.
All right. Anyone here to speak under public comment? Once, twice? Got anything, Jody?
It's being recorded, no.
Well, go ahead and close public comment, then. Consent agenda, anyone have any items on consent they would like pulled?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent passes. We have no public hearings tonight. We have one item under General Business.
Listen, second, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Basically, we're looking for a council determination regarding the response to the reorganization of Endo International Bankruptcy. This is, you might call, self-government of the opioid class action suit. And so I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney, because it's a very legal issue, to give us something and make a recommendation on the issue.
So essentially, there's a pending plan for reorganization for Endo International Bankruptcy, Endo International Bankruptcy. And it's one of the parts of the municipal companies, it's part of the defendants in the opioid litigation. The plan will provide $460 billion that's going to be put into a trust. You have the option to approve the plan, reject the plan, and reject the plan, reject the release of claims. The state court is going, or the state is going to approve the plan regardless of what you do. Plan will be whatever is approved by the courts in Iowa. Whether you approve, reject, or approve. So the recommendation is to basically do nothing. If you do nothing, it has no impact. The state will approve it, you'll get your money, you'll get the maximum amount you can get. The only way you would not get funds is if you need to approve, to reject the plan and reject the release of all claims, because then you're not going to be able to get your money, not going to release those claims. And as you're offered first, you need to try to, from your own, so my recommendation is to nothing.
Okay, counsel?
I agree with Andrea's recommendation.
And I apologize for getting into this too, to still wait, but you just got in the mail this week, and you got a decision Friday the 22nd, and you don't have any until the 22nd.
Tom, do you need a motion for something?
Can I make a motion to do nothing? I don't know if we've ever done one of those before. I mean...
Go for it, Josh.
Make a motion to do nothing.
Second.
Related to this topic.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes to do nothing. Onto reports. Under reports.
We do need a council representative for the commissioner interviews coming up. Either one council member for both the planning and parks commissioner interviews or if the council desires a representative to each of those interviews. Typically, we do them all on the same night, but there's a possibility based on everybody's availability that they could use one of the two per night.
I mean, I've done it before. Happy to do it again unless anyone else wants to. Does anyone want to serve as a backup in case my schedule can get kind of weird?
I'm happy to serve as a backup. I just have very limited evening availability, but I will do my best.
Okay.
That's what we needed.
Anything to pass on for public works?
No, Corey had nothing beyond what was in his written report.
Yeah. Chief, it's your show.
Very short. Unless you have questions. Officer Dabo is off-field training and he's on a shadow schedule, meaning he's working by himself, but will always be working with another officer on duty for the month of February. Then the month of March, our new schedule takes effect. We have an opening that the application process ends the twenty-third of this month. And then we'll be having the first and the second interview the week of March eleventh that Amanda and Gina are going to be on and they've been notified for that. We're still picking an exact date. We have no applications yet, but not in common when we have two and a half, three weeks left. And other than that, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Engineering.
The twenty-two reconstruction project is not permitted. And I know there's at least one twenty-four because I got a question. Not related to the content, our estimate, they always want, for bonding purposes, that like they had an idea about a project early on. So that's good news. The rehab project should be papers in a week. And then I would guess we'll start dating for that as well, on March fourth, if I recall from those issues. Other than that, stand for any questions?
I like the goatee. Community development. Okay. Anything to pass on for parks?
Nope. The update's in there. That covers most, most everything. Unless you have any questions that I can relay back to Jake.
I don't think we're good. CCEC.
We have not met since the last council meeting, but we meet on the twentieth this month. Working on the egg hunt.
All right. Scale. Scale exec, first of all, I sent the minutes to Tom just before this meeting and asked him if he'd distribute it to you folks. So you'll get a breakdown of the, of the meeting. It wasn't super exciting. It's not like anything dramatic happened. But as far as tomorrow morning, which is the general scale meeting, there's going to be, the focus is going to be on nonprofits. I don't know a lot more than that. Then the Met Council, I think Deb Barber's going to be representing the Met Council and just kind of going over, I think, the twenty-fifty development plan. Anything for service delivery?
No. There's continued, I was unable to attend that meeting. But my understanding is that there was an, I was supposed to be facilitating the discussion, but service delivery had gotten assigned to find a process or a way forward for there to have a larger discussion related to the conflict we've seen recently between rural industrial development and growth plans for urban development for cities. You recall that there was a question that came up and we were asked to take a side in Prior Lake and also in the city of Jordan. Both times we declined, but indicated we would be welcoming of a larger discussion. And so the Service Delivery Committee was tasked with facilitating that larger discussion. There was a fair amount of discussion at the meeting, but the townships weren't there to be able to present their side of things, so to speak. And so ultimately, what was decided was that the topic would be kicked to the technical team, which is primarily the community development people within the community, to engage the townships, get their feedback, get a better understanding of the issue and if possible, find common ground on the topic.
Okay. I thirty-five.
There was a meeting this morning and I was not able to go. There wasn't anything on the agenda as far as a topic besides the legislative update that I think was shared, so.
Yeah. Discussion by council. An item on the agenda? The remodel of the old police department building?
So Councilmember Berg had asked that this item be placed on the agenda. In the memo, I kind of reminded everybody of the background on it. But most recently, the council recall that as part of the overall project work for building the addition on City Hall was to do some structural work on the main building, old PD building, and with the intent of preserving the asset well enough until we can decide what we want to do with it and have funding to do whatever that is. The, that is now a couple of years old. And as I understand it, Josh would like to have a discussion with the council about, okay, when do we take the next step in the process on this?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we've just been up there with the Hope for Community Food Shelf stuff recently and started thinking, you know, is there, when is the time to revisit the discussion on moving forward with anything? So I think it kind of is broken down into a different, few different phases of, A, do we want to have a discussion? Do we want to spend any time on it to decide if there is a there there? And then the next phase, if the council is supportive of, you know, starting, restarting that discussion again, how do we want that process to look and who's involved in it and just what steps to take? But I think it really is that first, you know, all the way back to the beginning is, is now a time to reopen it? Is there interest in talking about, talking about doing something with it, basically? And if there is, then make some recommendations.
Yeah, it sounds like a work session, or it could be a good work session item. But I think kind of what you're getting at is first, is there interest in doing this? Yeah, I'm going to be concerned from a budgetary standpoint, but aside from that, I think it's a good conversation to have. Kate, Amanda?
I agree. I think it's a great conversation to have. Maybe be able to figure out what we're thinking we could use it for and then maybe rough estimate what it might cost for budget reasons to be able to fix it the way we want it to be done. But it sounds like a good workshop.
I don't have anything to add. I'm on board.
So in terms of kind of crafting a good work session to discuss this, are there some general parameters that you had in mind, Josh, that you wanted to throw out there or?
Well, I mean, I think as Tom and I have chatted a little bit is, you know, so hearing that there's interest, at least having a discussion, you know, and I hear the financial piece because I think that's a piece of it. And maybe it's a, where do we want to go? Because we never even really decided, what do we want that space to look like, you know? What direction we want it to be? Is it a community thing? So, you know, there were some thoughts that have been chatted about, you know, do we, do we put together or appoint or whatever the right word is, a smaller group of community members that would be able to provide feedback and direction? A lot of this was sparked too by the POPS stuff out in New Prague and listening to them do their thing and do some fundraising. But really, even other than that, it's the community focus on, let's do something for the community. So, you know, trying to frame up what's possible, A, I guess, from the standpoint of the physical plant and, you know, what's doable. But even before that, it's like, what is the community interested in? So how do we get that information? What kind of group do we want to pull together? And then based on that, that can probably provide some direction on getting estimates of what that cost might be. You know, could we go out for bonding? Could we, or not bonding, could we go to the legislature and get something in a bonding bill or something and some grants that way, so.
So first step is really just getting, really getting the community feedback as to what we need. Go ahead, Kate.
Well, I was going to just say, it's great to get the community feedback and I'm not against that. But at the same token, do we want to kind of come up with ideas of our own? Because I'm nervous if we open it to the community, then they're going to automatically assume that it's going to be done immediately. And I don't want to set that precedence. I don't want them to get hurt if it doesn't happen immediately when this is just, let's see what we can do, let's see what we can come up with financially. Just being devil's advocate, I suppose, asking the questions.
Well, maybe this, yeah, I mean, that's a good point. Maybe before getting community feedback, it'd probably be a good idea to kind of talk to the planning department. I mean, there's a zoning piece to that that's probably a big, big piece, don't you think, or no?
Yes, no. It's zoned currently for institutional.
Okay. We can do whatever we want.
Issues with the property line there?
Not with regards to the building itself. So our property actually runs about half, if I recall, like between half, first baseline and the mound onto the ball field. So the ball field actually leases a portion of the property from us, not the other way around. The, the two big pieces, I think, related to this are exactly as Josh, you have to decide what you want it to be. That may not affect, depending what that is, that may not affect the building a whole lot. We want to be a senior center, okay? It's going to be an open space with offices and this and that. We want it to be community rental space for events, okay? It's a big open space and some, you know, it may not, it may or may not change the interior layout. But the biggest piece, of course, is what it's going to cost. But if we're going to seek money from the legislature, Joe and I have had feedback from our legislators about what kind of information they want, if they're going to go to bat for us. And if we want to go to the voters on it, or we want to seek maybe funding from local organizations or other sources, we need to have a product that we are presenting, which is going to be, and this is how much we need to make it happen. I think the initial discussion of what it might be is quicker. And then it, and then there's a question about whether that's a, how inclusive or how large a group has that discussion. But I think before you get too far down the road, you have to do some high-level design work to figure out, okay, what is it actually going to take and this is what it might, what it might cost.
Yeah, and just to even frame up a little bit more too, you know, I don't think it's a community-wide survey or, you know, inviting everybody. I mean, obviously, we'll have whatever open house type things and getting feedback. But it's, you know, even with some of those direct partners like the ball field or the baseball team, you know, the Hope for the Community, those that are, I mean, we know are already partners in it. You know, perhaps the fire relief, perhaps, you know, there's a few people slash organizations that I think could be brought to the table sooner to help kind of with that high-level design side of things that may be partners along the way.
So how do we facilitate that, that's moving forward?
Well, I think the first discussion is, how do you, how do you want to, how do you want to manage the process? Is it going to be a council staff item or do you want to bring in stakeholders and who are they and engage them? I think that's the first discussion.
Part of my brain with the POPS thing, that was a nice little machine that they created over there that took it off city staff and, you know, to be a community-driven thing. Now, I don't know how realistic, you know, and, you know, with the community and the size and the engagement, whatever, it might be a completely different thing. But knowing we have so much stuff going on with the city and development stuff, that was, you know, kind of the premise behind the first question. Do we even want staff, the limited staff time to be working on this? Or, and/or, you know, could we leverage, you know, others engaged in it to help lead it? And, you know, I throw this out there and I don't, it doesn't sound like it's an option, but it's something to at least think. But if we don't want to do anything with it in the short term or whatever, do we want to consider getting rid of it? And taking it off of the, selling it and letting somebody else do something with it? You know, we've talked about in the past, we've wanted to hold on to it, but something to, you know, the other side of it, just to think about, so.
So maybe, Tom, is it possible to do a work session on this and maybe staff kind of goes through at a high level some of the different options and what we need to go into it and then we can go from there?
Yep. Present options, maybe some suggestions on strategy. And then the council can give us direction going from there. We got to start, if you're going to move forward, you got to start somewhere.
Right.
That might not be an entire work session, depending on how efficient you guys are with the, with the discussion. So we might either have a little bit of extra, a recess between or we might try and put another item on that same agenda.
Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Any other discussion by council?
It's not currently on any register. And in my experience, in my career, and Renee can talk about her experience, the whole historic element of it is more of a badge of honor than it is really restrictive with regards to what you do with the building, so.
Exactly my experience and also experience in looking, there isn't any grant money available for his buildings that are on the historic register. Typically, in a recent conversation with some of the people on the, our member on the board, I said that usually there's a nonprofit form that's a community-driven, you know, friends of the old City Hall or old school. And then funding is usually community-driven.
Yeah. Any other discussion by council?
Just one thing back to the scale thing, or the topic is timely because I, last month, I don't remember when it was, but I went to a Met Council water something or other for the southeast, southwest, whatever region we're in, part of it. And I mean, it was, must be southwest. Because it was Prior Lake and Savage and others were there. But anyway, so they have a meeting coming up on the twenty-ninth of February. I can't go. But it might not be bad. I'll forward the information if I didn't already do that to you, Tom, to forward out, to have some presence there. It's part of the, one of the many different things that the Met Council oversees and it's the water side of it. So I thought it was kind of timely and whatever for us to be a part of that. And a lot of the other city, like Savage, Prior Lake, their public works directors or water guys are there, so.
Anything else or anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kate, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.